Six o'clock, I'll call the August 24th, 2021, meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. This evening, we have Pastor Roger Krieger, the Retreat Pentecostal Wholeness Church, provide an invocation. If you would please rise and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
It's always an honor to come and do these, even though I don't get to come that often. And yes, I try to give you an item, maybe a sweet tooth for tonight. Appreciation's a word for just a second. You all, as county leaders, hear the positive and the negative throughout the county, and many times, you're not appreciated. But I, for one, express my appreciation to each and every one of you for the leadership that you give the county and for what you do in the position that you're in. Because I've heard that if you don't appreciate someone, you will depreciate the relationship. I appreciate and I value our relationship and our friendship. Let's pray. Father God, we truly are thankful and grateful for your many, many blessings upon us. I do thank you, Lord, for this meeting tonight and for the leaders that we have before us to lead our county and give direction to the county. And we pray, Father, in the moments tonight, as we're gathered together, that you'll give them wisdom, discretion, and all that they do. Dear Father, help them to think clearly and to speak wisely and just bless them in everything that's taking place. And Father, we promise that we'll give you praise and glory and honor for it, for we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Krieger, before you leave, thank you for the words and let us just say we appreciate you and what a fine daughter you raised with a great work ethic. We wish we had about a dozen more.
You all be in prayer for us in our area. This will be the last official time that I can do this in this particular area. I will no longer be pastor of the Royal Retreat PH Church, art administrator of our school as of this coming Sunday. So there'll be in the process of getting a new one, and we'll be around an advisatory position, but I'm sure you'll hear. And so it was an honor to be here tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Tonight, we have two public hearings. The first public hearing is the Staff Street Transportation District Ordinance. If I can get this enlarged enough, I'll read it. The With County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, August 24th, 2021, at 6:05 in the boardroom of the County Administration Building, 340 South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia, for the creation of the Staff Street Transportation Service District of With County, for the consideration of street improvements to serve landowners pursuant to Section 15.2-2400 of the Code of Virginia. The purpose of the public hearing will be to hear from residents and property owners in the proposed district. A copy of the proposed district is available in the County Administrator's Office for review by order of the With County Board of Supervisors, Stephen D. Baer, County Administrator. We did not have anybody sign up to speak on the Staff Street public hearing. Is there anybody that'd like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Baer, would you want to proffer what this is?
Yes, this is a Transportation Service District Creation Ordinance, like we have done with several others. The most recent one we have done is the Grouse Ridge Road Service District, and it's the only active one that we still have ongoing out there. Mr. Crougy, Landmines Estates, has worked with the county over the past several years in proceeding with this. This one is different than the others in that BDOT approved it for revenue sharing, but BDOT moved the timeframe out for about three years. Landmines Estates have proceeded with doing the construction of the road and are requesting the creation of this district, which means the county will be paying for this construction and recouping those costs over the next seven years through this tax district. As shown in the ordinance, the total amount estimated to be collected is $97,921, and the tax for this district is initial tax rate of $1.48 per hundred dollars of assessed value. Mr. Chairman, I would, without hearing any comment from others, I would recommend approval of the ordinance with an effective date of January 1st, 2022, with the initial tax period commencing for calendar year 2022.
I've got a motion by Mr. McRoberts.
Second.
Approve ordinance 2021-4. I believe I'll have a second from Mr. Smith. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is there any question or discussion?
Let me rephrase my comment. I'm sorry, I said January 1st. Tax year '22. I would say effective on October 1st, 2021. Be okay with the motion?
Does that change your motion? Does that lead to any questions or discussion?
I did go down and look at it myself. It looks good to me. Made a big improvement already in the new town to me.
All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. The next public hearing we have is for the Exempted Food Service Activities Ordinance. In compliance with the Code of Virginia and amendments thereto, the With County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing to consider an ordinance entitled Exempted Food Service Activities Ordinance for With County, Virginia. The Board of Supervisors will hear comments from citizens concerning the proposed ordinance. Public hearing will be held Tuesday, August 24th, 2021, at 6:05 p.m. in the boardroom of the With County Office Building, 340 South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia. Copy of the proposed ordinance is on file in the County Administrator's Office located 340 South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia, or online at www.withco.org for public review. We did not have anybody sign up to speak on the public hearing for the food service exemption. Is there anybody that'd like to speak that's in attendance? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment period. And Mr. Baer, would you want to explain this?
I will pass this on to Mr. Hinkins.
Thank you, Mr. Baer. This is a common sense sort of ordinance that the Health Department requested that we consider. This is to exempt certain charitable organizations from having to go through food inspection processes and application fees with the Health Department for every event that they're going to do. This exemption gives them the ability to serve food to the public through fairs and festivals, again, without having to go through the inspection process, particularly for individual kitchens and members' homes.
I'll open the floor for motion to approve ordinance 2021-05. Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Smith.
Aye.
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 So approved. Now, we'll move into our regular agenda. The first item is Citizens Time. We have three citizens signed up. The first one is Ms. Linda Meyer. Ms. Meyer?
Yes, good evening. Earlier this month, I got some material emailed to me, and I proceeded to look into it. I was contacted by the Florida Parents Alliance. They put out a list of books, sexually explicit books, that they found within their school system, 44 to be exact. And so I was very curious about these books and so on. So I filed a FOIA request with our With County Public Schools, and then I got the information the other day. Well, lo and behold, we have 14 of these books. I would call them smut porn. They're extremely graphic with pictures, condoning sex, sex acts. It is, they're absolutely awful. So this is pornographic stuff, and it's on a children's level, all the way from kindergarten all the way up through high school. What I did was, I copied this all for each of you. Here are the list of the books that are in our school system, these sexually explicit books, and it also lists the page and some of the references. So I was, as I'm looking at this, there are so many good things and so many wonderful books that we could have. I don't feel that we need this trash here in our With County school system. So, and if you remember, several years ago, the Freedom From Religion group went to our school board because of the plaque that we had hanging at Spiller School that said, "God bless this cafeteria and the food," and so on. And the, the school district came and they took down our plaque that had been there for 50-some years. Well, I'm asking you, on behalf of parents, kids, and With County, to also be against these particular books, 44 of them to date, that are sexually explicit. And we, I'm asking you, on behalf of the parents in With County, to contact the school board with an official letter telling them that you are, in fact, against these books and would like them removed. It's the taxpayers are funding these things, and there is no reason to have this, all these sexualized books in our school system. I don't want to have to read you some of the stuff, but it's absolutely awful. And to find out that we, in fact, do have them in our school system was very, very upsetting. So, that's what I'm here for, on behalf of the parents, the school kids. We've got plenty of wonderful books out there that we could have in our system. We don't need smut and porn to be in our school system, in the classrooms and in the libraries. So please check this out, and I'm asking you to follow up with the school board, and we will all be at the next school board meeting and so on. I've given this information to them, they have it, and hopefully, they will also act on it. But it would be very good if you guys would stand behind us and also act on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. The next person signed up is Brittany Childress. Did I say that right?
Yeah, Childress, yeah. Um, I have filed an exemption on putting in a water line from Shrewt Mountain to my house on, on Shrewt Mountain. I have spoke with Mr. Terry and Mr. Horny on this. I've been in court several times with Mr. Farthing on this topic. So I am here to ask for an exemption to not install the water at my property. I have pictures. The reason I'm asked for the exemption is I have a creek that runs the length of my property on Shrewt Mountain that lines with the, the water line that was put in back in I talked to R&amp;R Septic, and they had mentioned it was going to cost anywhere from $5,000 to $6,000 estimate to dig under the creek, put a cement barrier around it, and then finish the line all the way to the house. The house has been there since 1900, has a well. The well has worked fine and continues to work great. I do have a renter, a rent-to-own contract on that land as well that does state that they are responsible for this matter, but I don't know if you guys would like to see the pictures that run the creek in this contract. I can pass it around.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, if we wanted just to lay, this is an item that's on the agenda under the Water Committee. If we want to have her come forward at that point in time and go through the pictures, and Mr. Crisp is here to go through some information on that side of it and do it after Citizens Time, if you would like.
That, that probably works. It's on our agenda if you want it.
Okay. I've never been to one of these.
Oh, you're fine. You're fine. I thought I recognized the name, but yeah. If you just want to have a seat, we'll bring you back up.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, the next person we have signed up for Citizens Time is Diane Ennis. Ms. Ennis?
Hi, Diane Ennis, Connors Valley Road. Good evening. Eternal vigilance requires taking a stand. I'm going to speak about the topic regarding a list of books that Ms. Meyer just referred to in the With County Public Schools. I will begin by reading an excerpt from a letter to the editor, which was written by my husband, printed in a local newspaper in 1992. Yes, that's 29 years ago. I don't want to tell you my age. The letter opposed the introduction of a child's book about immoral sexuality, pardon me. The book was going to be assigned to the public library's children's room. My husband wrote, quote, "I question the moral judgment of the unnamed children's librarian and the chairman of the library board of trustees. They say they don't want to be censors. One said that we want our people informed." Now, the next part is sarcasm, so please understand. My husband wrote, "Perhaps then, we should add a children's section of pornography, include some good books on X-rated mindset. We want our kids to be smart." That was sarcasm. 29 years ago, my husband wrote those words to get people's attention by exaggerating with sarcasm. Thankfully, the people of the community rallied together, and that children's book was not included in the library's children's room. So here we are in 2021, again, objecting to the sexual explicit books that are being held in the classrooms and the library of kindergarten through 12th grade public schools. You've got to be kidding me. So, what can you do, the Board of Supervisors? Well, you can send a letter to the With County School Board declaring these books must be removed from the K through 12 public school libraries and classrooms. And remember, eternal vigilance requires taking a stand.
Thank you, Ms. Ennis. That's the only per, or that was the last person signed up for Citizens Time, so I'll close Citizens Time. The next item on the agenda is the payment of invoices.
Make a motion with that invoice.
Have a motion by Mr. McRoberts. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any invoice any board member wants to pull out or discuss? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. The next item is the minutes of our previous meeting from August the 10th, 2021. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horny. Is there any questions or corrections to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Smith.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda is old business. Mr. Baer, do we have anything under old business?
I do not have any items under old business, Mr. Chairman.
Any other member have anything under old business? All right, we'll move on to reports. First one is the Treasurer's Report. Ms. Quinn?
Ms. Quinn is not with us tonight, and I'll be glad to refer any questions back to her if you would like.
We're not going broke, are we?
No, sir.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Baer to take to Ms. Quinn? All right, Water Committee report.
The Water Committee met on August 17th, 2021, and recommends the following. First is proceeding with alternate number two for the Barrett Mill Road Water Improvement Project.
Mr. Baer, do you want to explain that one?
Yes, and I'll ask Mr. Crisp if there's anything I leave out to jump in here. But on page 66 of your agenda, you will see a map of the Barrett Mill Water Project. Our original project that we had started looking at ran from the far left of your screen, the southwest there, running all the way up along 21, then all the way across Barrett Mill Road. And the original project was ending near the northernmost part of your map. You'll see a little six-inch line going to Stone Meadows. All of the sampling of the water that was done included the area up on Whipper Wheel, Blackberry, Edenwood, Lookout Drive, all of those areas. Several of these well systems were found to have, I guess I'll call, contamination issues with them. And the recommendation that was presented to the authority or to the Water Committee was to proceed with this proposal for the water system. You can see the estimated cost to serve this area is around $3.9 million. Our engineer on this project has been in touch with rural development, and it appears that if all goes well, we should be eligible with this being in the, majority of this, other than a few houses been in the Spiegel district to meet the, the median household income level for grants with our water rates, and we should be able to get a 70% loan, 30% grant on this project. So, the Water Committee reviewed and recommends with proceeding with development of an application for the Barrett Mill Project Alternative.
I'll open the floor up for any questions or discussion.
I think we need to go forward on this pretty quick because, if I recall from the report, we've got E. coli in some of those wells and other things to be for our direction, and we need pictures.
So wherever it's blue on this map, that's where we're going with the water line, correct?
Yes, sir.
And that's all of Stone Meadow Lane?
It's got Stone Meadow, it goes up Whipper Wheel, it goes up Blackberry and Edenwood, Lookout Drive, before you get there, all of those areas.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions? Coming from committee doesn't need a second. We'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved.
The second thing was denying Brittany Green's request for a waiver to hook to county water.
And I assume Brittany Green is also Brittany Green.
Sorry. That's what I said when I came to the meeting, and they said Brittany Green. I was like, what? That ain't who called me.
Come on up, Ms., is it Ms. Childress or Ms. Green?
It's Mrs. Childress.
I assume since you signed in that way, that was correct.
Yeah.
It doesn't take much to confuse. You want to explain this for Mr. Baer?
Well, um, yes, and, and I guess if you, well, while she's up front, I'll let her, if you want to explain from her side, you know, what the issue is. But basically, we had some uncollected water that was, was being paid and went to court on that issue. She brought up one of the items to the judge that indicated our ordinance provided for requesting a waiver from, been required to connect to the water system. And so she came back and requested that, that waiver be considered. Obviously, you've heard the recommendation from the committee, but we'll let her, I guess, present her information as to, to what she's got, and then Mr. Crisp can also, following that, fill in some information, and then we can go through some questions at that time.
All right, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay. Um...
Let me just bring up there, on page 67 of your package is a map of the property.
And what that map does not show you is the creek that runs the entire length of that property. And that's where I'm asking for the exemption. One for that is because of the creek that does run the whole length. I've got pictures, if you would like to see.
Yeah, bring, bring.
I'd like to see the picture.
They're not that great, however you all want to start. They're not the greatest pictures, I won't bet. But you will see, it's all, it's a rocky creek, and like I said, I did have R&amp;R Septic come out and do an estimate to run the water line from the water meter on the side of Shrewt Mountain up to the house. He had mentioned anywhere from $5,000 to $6,000, and that is just an estimate that does not account for what they may run into while they are digging. He mentioned with the creek, he would have to put a concrete barrier around the water line. I don't live at that property and have not. I do have a, a rent-to-own contract with the, a lady that lives there now. And in the contract, it does say that the buyer is responsible to, or shall comply with all laws, ordinance, regulations, or parts of any governmental body applicable to the property. I have that here, if you guys would like to see that as well.
And, and I assume, just to clarify, you own the property?
I own the property.
Okay.
But I do have a rent-to-own contract that they are paying a monthly fee.
Does this creek have any water in?
There is one picture there that shows some water.
Just a wet, wet river stream?
For the most part, but we do, it has water pretty much year-round, except maybe the month of July when it's really hot. But for the most part, it does continue to have water.
Another question is, how far is the, how far is the meter away from the house?
102 feet?
I think 100 and some feet.
102.3 feet is according to that.
$5,000.
And that was going to be my question. Mr. Baer, or Mr. Crisp, what's the, what's the normal cost for a house that's 102.3 feet from a meter?
I have theories on the, the geology they encounter, but they were $5,000 foot. It would be higher just from north to north. That, that geology up there is sandy, rocky, sandstone type soil. We're running things solid like limestone in that area. It's just mostly sandy, loose rock soil. It would require the contractor to pay the, the price to stem. Go on through the creek, they could slay it through another five tons of water, put it concrete. Service lines, they usually don't put concrete, but they could, that's probably down the price a little bit.
And that's what R&amp;R Septic is, the concrete going under the, the creek was where the majority of the cost was going to be.
So does it have to be concreted under the creek?
Uh... It doesn't have. The creek, creek beds, it's a wet weather creek bed, it's like Miss Dry when I was up there.
Looks like a ditch.
We've had folks put, you know, regular running streams. This particular, when I looked at it, a couple of weeks ago, it's running Miss Dry, and so it's not like it's a, you know, perennial stream.
So can they, can they just dig through the creek, or do they have to bore under it?
No, it could be, it could be dug through.
So there's no restrictions on going through the creek, like Mr. Horny and Mr. Crisp?
Do you, do you have anything from R&amp;R where they gave you a quote?
I, I don't. It was just over the phone. I should have got something from him, but it was over the phone. Excuse me. I, I don't work locally, so it's hard to meet up with somebody during the week. But I did speak with an errand from R&amp;R Septic.
What does, Mr. Baer, what's our, what's our county ordinance say about the exemption? I can't remember.
The ordinance is what she was referencing when she was, before. The ordinance is what she was referencing when she was before Judge Mabe, I believe, was the judge on this matter. We do have a statement in there that indicates the county can grant a waiver to a connection. Generally, what that is, is if, if a property line, and I'll just use an example, the property line runs all the way across the new river and our water line is at their property line, their house is across the new river, obviously, they're not going to be required to connect. There are situations where they're, the road may be several feet, 50 feet below it, their house is up on a cliff or something like that, a rocky area where it's not feasible to run a water line. It gives the ability to grant a waiver to connecting to that water line. In this situation, I understand, you know, Ms. Green's request, but we, we do not see, and that's what we indicated to the board, we do not see any characteristics that prohibit the installation of, of a water line to serve this property.
I mean, I'll be honest with you, I'd, if you come in here with the written quote from R and R.
Okay.
I, I think that would, I can't speak for the other six people up here, but that would, I'd, I'd put a lot of weight into the written quote. You know, that's, I, I don't, I mean, coming, coming from committee doesn't need a second. I'll open up the floor for any discussion.
I agree, I'm sorry, I agree with Mr. Ball. I think that would definitely be helpful. I personally don't think that I can vote on this tonight. I mean, I've, I've looked at it, I've studied it, I just don't know enough about it to make a decision on it. I realize it came from a committee, but I just personally don't feel comfortable voting on it without more, a little bit more information.
So if I get a quote, a written quote from R and R, would that, I mean, is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, and, and, you know, without, I'm kind of like Ms. Lawson, you know, we're, we're not on the Water Committee. We weren't, you know, privy to what that discussion, of course, you heard Mr. Bear, Mr. Crisp, but, you know, my thing is, I don't think the Water Service should put any undue stress on one citizen that's not applicable to every citizen. That's, that's my thoughts.
Yeah.
I can't speak for the other six people. So that's why I said if you had a written quote, that would definitely change my mind. Now, to speak to what Ms. Lawson said, you know, it's, coming from committee doesn't need a second, I, I don't see any harm in, in if we table this for 30 days and give Ms. Childress 30 days to provide some documentation and move on from there, but that's just my fault.
And I don't, I don't want to make you feel like that will definitely change anyone's opinion.
Right, no.
I'm just saying personally.
Right.
I cannot vote on it without a little bit more information.
Okay.
And I just need a little bit more time.
Mr. Chairman, I would just note that there's a court date mid-September. Mr. Mabe continued that to see if the board was going to waive it. So if you could bring it up at the next meeting, that wouldn't be quite 30 days, but that gives you about two weeks or so, the first meeting in September. You don't have to, the court can wait, that's not a huge issue.
Well, Judge Mabe was there every Monday.
He sets court date, you want to, you want to tell him when to set his calendar, I'll let you do that. I'll show up and.
Well, meet me down there Monday. Bring, bring some landy that you need to bail me out.
The other thing I would note, you know, I don't know if Mr. Crisp has any other comments, but, you know, this is a monthly minimum user fee. That's why the court, that's why we went to court to begin with. So that minimum fee is not being paid. Her options are to install the line, connect and use the water, but she doesn't have to. She just needs to pay the monthly minimum fee. She doesn't have to spend the $5,000 or whatever to R and R or whoever to put the line in. She can pay the minimum monthly fee if she has under contract to sell it, whether she passes that on to the tenant or not, that's up to her, but that's what we're asking her to do. We're not asking her to install the line, we're just asking her to comply with the ordinance, which is if you're within 300 feet, you connect and hook up, or you pay the minimum monthly fee for the service. So we're not making her connect, just to clarify.
And I, and I'm requesting an exemption under the ordinance.
And that is where it becomes a challenge because if you exempt one person that's within the 350 feet, every project and every point that's out there with those, you're going to be exempted.
I understand, and I appreciate that information, that stuff I didn't know.
Yeah, it's, there's not been any indication of wanting to connect to the water, there's not been indication of wanting to be served by the water. It's in going after bad, bad debts, unpaid water bills, that she made this request for the waiver of, of paying the fees of what's outstanding.
So Mr. Bear, what have we done in the past with, and I know in my district specifically on one particular road, there's a couple individuals that was impacted similar to what Ms. Childress is going through here. What did we decide on those? They're, they're on LotScout, by the way. Have we done the same for other areas or have we, has it just been on a case by case basis?
The, no one has come forward in, in her situation that's not been paying the non-user fee and has gone to court and come and said, in order to get out of paying the non-user fee over the last several years of this line, to, to do a waiver. The, there's not been any waivers recently that I'm aware of, of the lines. And I'll let Mr. Crisp step up and see if there's any there.
I don't recall that we've ever granted exemption, exemption to that. Keep in mind the minimum charge, our line conditions that we have to throw about is requires, you know, well, ordinance is written, you're within 350 feet, you're required to pay the minimum charge before you can connect to the system. Minimum charge, you know, that's by fire protection. And gives them the availability to connect to water in the future. And yeah, I'll say keep in mind, the cost, whatever the cost is, two, three, four thousand to connect, if the well goes bad, it's going to cost a lot more to drill well, that will be that part. So that's why county water is there, provide that opportunity for the citizen to have the bar. So I don't know that we, I don't recall that we've ever granted any exemptions. It would have to be a hard, you know, something like cliff or if the home is, is within 350 feet and they don't have right of way access, then that would be an exemption if they can't get to it. The ordinance requires that the home has to be within 350 feet of the right, right of way contained water line and they have to have right of way access to it, so.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that these individuals that I'm talking about got an exemption. I know they're having to pay the user fee, one doesn't want to do it, one's paying the fee, but would like to hook on the water, but they have a stream similar to what you're talking about. And they were told that they couldn't come on it, I was just want to know what we've done in the past.
Yeah, that's not, not.
We can, we can talk offline.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can talk offline.
Ms. Childress, how long have you owned the property?
I've owned the property since 2011 and the, this contract has been in place since 2015. So I have, I have not lived on that property since 2015.
And how long has water been available up through there?
The water, the water contract was.
2018.
Twenty eighteen, is that?
I believe that's when it.
So is Ms. Childress having to pay the user fee or the tenant that lives there?
They're charging me for the, the user fee.
The, the owner of the property is responsible for the non-user fee. Now, if, if connected, she could, and it was a rent to own situation, she could sign up the renter to pay for that fee, the security deposit and all that goes with that. But not being connected, it goes to the owner of the property.
But if I have a, a contract with the tenant that says that they're responsible for all laws, regulations, would that not exempt me from having to pay the non-user fee if it says here in the contract that they're responsible for it since it's been, since 2015?
I would refer to county attorney, but since you are the landowner out.
The county, the county bill is the record landowner, right? So you're the record landowner because the deed's still in your name. So if you have a contract with a third party, then that's your responsibility to collect from the third party. So either you have them pay it for you or you pay it and go collect it from them. That's an issue between you and the third party as to who pays that water bill. And the county can't go to the third party and collect because they don't own the land and they don't have a contract with us to buy water.
So.
But if you want to pass it on to your tenant, that's between you and your tenant, how that works.
So, so a contract is null and void for the county? If I have a contract with a person.
That contract is between you and that person. County's not a party to that contract.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I know you're not, but you're, my understanding is that what you're saying is my contract is null and void for the county, which when it says specifically in the contract that the buyer shall comply with all laws, ordinance, regulations, and requirements of any governmental body applicable to the property. So you're telling me that.
We bill the property owner.
Null and void.
Then, what he's saying is that becomes a civil issue between you and your tenant.
So the county would not take this into consideration?
We can't bill the tenant. We can't bill the tenant, we have no right to go after the tenant for money.
They, so, what's, what's the board's pleasure? Do you want to hold it over to the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I'm good anyway.
If, if you like, we, we will provide information of, of when service started, the outstanding bills, the bill payment history and all of that to all of you all. And then, you know, you've seen her information and then, so if you want to table this to the next meeting, we can do so.
Next, so that gives you two weeks to get a written estimate.
Okay.
But I don't think the written estimate.
No, the date's not till after the next meeting.
Is really an issue because we're talking, we're talking about the non-user fee.
The written estimate is an issue for me to decide how I'm going to vote.
And I would like the.
I'm not talking about the contract with the, with the county.
And I would like the info that, Mr., I personally would just like the info that you just said. Like, like I said earlier, I know, I know that committee already looked at that, but, and I probably should have asked for that before this meeting, but I would like that before I vote on it. But if it's the board's wishes to vote on it, I mean, I'll just abstain. I mean, don't hold it up for me if.
I mean, I don't see a problem with holding it up as long as we don't get troubles with the courts. I mean, they got a, they've got.
The next court date's not till after your next meeting, so.
Something that I, I believe I'm right on this from the Water Committee. Originally, she didn't think she had a right of way to the water line, but we were told she does have a 10-foot right of way. Is that right?
Well, her, her property does.
Her property joins the right of way.
So the whole length of it?
She joins the road.
She joins, yes.
Okay. Because I was, I was just thinking if it was only a 10-foot section, then somebody needs to find out what that 10-foot section was and where it's at.
Well, I will say that's news to me if you're saying that I have a, more than a 10-foot right of way. Because that, the information that was provided to me was I only had a 10-foot right of way.
You're saying you don't adjoin Strew Mountain Road?
I do not. I have, if you see that county picture right there, there is a strip of Mc, Clarence McGallister piece of land between my property and Strew Mountain.
That strip of land was dedicated in the subdivision to be a public way as part of the road. And it's, it's not shown on the tax map, but it's shown on the plat, which is of record. We provided a copy of that to Ms. Childress.
And that plat said 10 feet, not the whole length of the property.
Jean, why don't you make a, you make a motion to table this to the next meeting since you're on the Water Committee?
I can do that. I'll make a motion that we table this to our next meeting.
I have a motion by Mr. Horn, do I have a second?
Aye.
Have a second by Mr. McCroft, do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So that means we're going to pass it by until our next meeting, okay?
Okay, and that's the, when's that next meeting?
I'm sorry, the 14th.
The 14th.
The 14th?
Yep.
Okay.
Fourteenth at six, same time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hankins, will you see if we got somebody from IT? We talked about water lines, much this thing locked in.
Do you want to take a quick recess while we pull, get that looked at and we pull the computer up to Dr. Bissel?
Let's, well, we'll do the consent calendar real quick. That next item was under new businesses, consent calendar, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Some of it.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horn, do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved, and we'll take a five-minute recess after the technology breakdown. Next item on the agenda under new businesses, Mount Roger Health District were joined virtually by Dr. Bissel, who I know is the interim director of Mount Rogers Health District. Dr. Bissel, I'm not, I know you're director slash interim director of several districts, but I can't name all of them.
Hi, good evening, thank you so much, I apologize. I will get there in person. Right now during the surge, it's a little bit of a challenge. I think you all know, we, we are seeing an increase in cases right now. This is the surge due to the Delta variant, it's not unexpected. It started in India and then other places in Europe and United Kingdom saw it, that we really started to get hit in our southern states and it's making its way pretty much across the country right now. And, you know, you're all in the area that's serviced by Ballard Health, which I know also includes Tennessee and Virginia. You all also are serviced by Lewis Gale, Lewis Gale Gilaski, I think sees a lot of the patients and Carillian does. You know, Ballard started to see the strain a little bit earlier, but now our hospitals are also starting to see the strain. You know, one of the problems with the hospitalizations is that people really put off care during the pandemic, the past 18 months, a lot of people put things off. And so they're coming into the hospitals sicker now. So not only do the hospitals have to deal with patients with other things besides COVID who are coming in sicker, but then they're dealing with the surge of COVID patients right now as well. So it's definitely a challenge and, you know, quite honestly, a lot of our hospital workers, a lot of our public health workers, because of the stress and the pressure for the past 18 months, have left their positions. So we're all kind of feeling stuck and conscious as well. And, you know, Delta is much more transmissible than the variant, the B117, which was the variant that we were dealing with over the wintertime. And what happens when you have something that's that much more transmissible, the cases go up pretty quickly and pretty steeply and then they, they'll peak and they'll start coming back down. If you look at the curves, you know, for England, if you look at the curves for India and then even our southern states and even now Virginia, that peak occurs probably over about four to six weeks. And so here in southwest Virginia, we started to really start seeing an increase in our cases towards the end of July. So we're, we're coming up on about a month in, you know, so we're expecting that in the next week or two, we should be seeing our peak and then we should start seeing a decline in those cases again. So, you know, that's, that's what we're expecting. You know, we are seeing a lot of cases, we are definitely seeing most of our cases amongst those who are not vaccinated. And this is leading to kind of a younger demographic being hospitalized with COVID because that's the larger percentage of population that's not vaccinated. So our young adults, our adolescents, and obviously our younger kids. We, we are seeing, you know, the other thing that's in the media is about breakthrough cases from vaccinated folks and, and no vaccine is 100% effective. So we definitely are seeing cases in people who are vaccinated, but by and large. But by and large, those cases are mild and even if they do lead to someone being hospitalized, usually those folks tend to have other medical problems and, and they still end up not, um, in, in most cases, they end up not ending up having to be on the ventilator and certainly not ending up dying. So, so that's one of the biggest successes of the vaccine. It really does prevent that severe illness. In most cases, it prevents, prevents hospitalization, but even if they do end up hospitalized, um, it, it, you know, does prevent death. And, and that's really what we're looking for at this point. You know, looking forward, after this Delta surge, there are a lot of us who believe that this is kind of the last big surge that we're going to see from COVID. I don't think any of us expect that COVID is going to go away. We will be making that transition from the pandemic to what we call endemic. There will be other strains of COVID, there will be other variants of COVID. But, you know, as we get more people vaccinated, as more people have become infected, you know, natural infection does provide good immunity. Number of susceptible people will go down and so those subsequent waves will likely be smaller. And, and this will be more of a communicable disease that, that we deal with on a regular basis. There probably will be booster shots, they may be annual, like an annual flu shot. We're not quite sure where that will go, but it, it's looking more and more like that's kind of where things will be trending. So, um, I do expect, right now, we are seeing a lot of cases. I just pulled up with numbers. You know, it looks like the county is, is in the 20 to 30 cases per day right now, having been much lower than that through the summer into early July. And again, um, you know, by, by mid to end September, we really do expect to see those cases start coming down again. And, you know, and, um, any future waves, we really don't expect to see, you know, such significant numbers and certainly hoping not to see the significant hospitalizations. So, uh, one of the other questions I think you all had was the differences between, um, a, a confirmed case versus a positive case. So right now, the CDC definition of a confirmed case is a laboratory confirmed case. And the only lab test that they, that they recognize is the PCR test, the, the polymerous chain reaction, which has kind of been the gold standard. Right now, more tests that are the rapid tests are being done. Those are your antigen tests or what we call a lab flow test. Those rapid tests are not counted in laboratory confirmed cases. They would be counted under probable cases. So when we look at probable cases, that's one of, one of the ones that we see is if they have an antigen test. The other thing we call probable case is if someone has symptoms very characteristic of COVID and we know they've been exposed. Even if they don't have a lab test, if they have very characteristic symptoms of COVID and we know they've been exposed to a positive individual, we will call that a probable case as well. And then the third situation where we would call it a probable case is if someone is in the hospital and passes away and COVID gets listed on the death certificate as either a cause of death or contributing to the cause of death, but there was no actual test done, then that would be a probable case as well. If the test was done, a PCR test was done, it would be a confirmed case. So that's the difference there. You know, from the health department standpoint, we count all probable cases and cases as cases that we're doing case investigations, contact tracing, um, and, you know, really trying to limit spread, limit transmission. You know, I will say that when we're seeing so many cases in a day, the health department really goes into, you know, very much a search operation where we focus on, you know, really kind of getting to the meat of it, identifying the cases. A lot of times, you know, we will work with them to make sure that they notify their contacts. So even though we have, you know, so many cases reported, we know that there are far more people with COVID out there, just like there were back in the surge in the wintertime. We know that there are more people who are not getting tested, who are not coming forward, who may have been told by someone that they were diagnosed with COVID and this other person developed symptoms and just is told or assumes that they have COVID and, and they'll go ahead and do the isolation. So, so that's kind of what we do with our cases. You know, as I said, we're, we're expecting that the surge will peak and those numbers will come down. We will absolutely continue to try and get more people vaccinated. All of the health departments are, are trying to do as much outreach as possible to do the vaccines. I think you heard Pfizer, the Pfizer vaccine got full approval from the FDA yesterday. We do expect that Moderna will be not far behind within the coming weeks. They were a little bit later submitting data, but we do expect that that one will get full approval as well. Haven't heard much about where Johnson &amp; Johnson is as far as the full approval. As far as third doses of vaccines, that's another big thing that's been in the news. Couple of weeks ago, the CDC and the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices recommended after the FDA authorized a third dose for immunocompromised individuals. And we do have very good data that people who are immunocompromised do not mount an adequate response to the first two doses. These are people who are chronically immunosuppressed, they're on medication to suppress their immune system for autoimmune diseases, cancer patients on chemotherapy, people who have had transplants and have to be on, um, immunosuppressant drugs. And then certain conditions which are immunosuppressing, especially chronic renal failure, and people who don't have a spleen for whatever reason. So those people we have been doing third doses for, um, they call it a third dose as opposed to a booster because those people are not felt to have mounted an adequate immune response to the first two doses. All of our health departments are offering them, all of our community pharmacies are offering them. The other good news that came out was the possibility of a third booster shot for pretty much everybody. We are expecting that that would happen in the, the coming weeks. Once the FDA evaluates the data and then the HCP looks at it to make the recommendation. You know, that, what they're saying is that that would be eight months after the second shot for the mRNA vaccines. You know, most people didn't start get vaccinated, getting vaccinated other than healthcare workers and our nursing homes. Those were the folks that got vaccinated first in December, January, February. So we really are looking later into the fall where we'll start seeing those booster shots being given. We're already actively planning at the state level, at the regional level, at the local level to how we can handle those booster shots. I think it's very important for people to understand that the immunity doesn't all of a sudden drop at eight months. It doesn't all of a sudden disintegrate. You know, first of all, I think that the, the data is really not significant that the vaccine protectiveness is wearing off over that eight-month period. So there's not an urgency to get it. You know, we'd like to encourage people to, to just think about getting it. They might even want to get it with their flu shot, but there's certainly not an urgency like when nobody had any vaccine and we were really just trying to get the vaccine out there as quickly as we could to as many people as we could. I do think that it's somewhat of a panic over the whole booster thing. As we see our cases start to go down, I do think, you know, people will be a little bit more like, okay, I, I can do this as I'm doing my regular flu shots. And, and I suspect that in the coming years, we might actually, I know they're already planning to do some trials with a combined flu and, and COVID vaccine. So I suspect that's probably where that's going to go. As far as any kind of boosting after the Johnson &amp; Johnson, which is the one-dose vaccine, we, we don't have guidance on that. I will say that in Europe, right now, they are looking at using the, the mRNA vaccines, either Pfizer or Moderna, after the AstraZeneca vaccine. The AstraZeneca formulation is very, very similar to the Johnson &amp; Johnson, although that too was a two-dose vaccine. But they're getting very good results with giving a dose of the mRNA vaccine after the AstraZeneca. So I suspect that, that that's where that will come out, but we don't have that, that recommendation yet and they haven't formally submitted that data yet. As far as children in the five to 11-year-old range, um, we do expect that that will also become authorized under the emergency use in, in the coming months, probably by October timeframe. Pfizer is expected to submit their data sometime in September and we expect that the FDA would, would look at it and, and make a decision in October. And again, Moderna would be a little bit behind there. So we do expect that those would be under authorization. And right now, the, the 12 to 15-year-olds are still under emergency use authorization. The full approval is for 16 and up for Pfizer. And once Moderna gets the full approval, that would be for 18 and up. And then Moderna is looking at trying to get from five to 17 with their next round, which we expect sometime this fall as well. I think most of the schools are, are back in, in all of southwest now. I think the last ones were going back this week. I do think most of them are using some masking precautions, which I, I think is, is a smart idea right now during the surge. You know, I like to be very flexible and, um, once we do see our cases starting to go down, then, then we can look at, you know, how much of the layer mitigation that we, that we use. These are all mitigation strategies and we encourage, obviously, the, the biggest mitigation strategy is, is those who can be vaccinated to please get vaccinated. Those who can't be vaccinated, be it younger children or people who are immunocompromised and who for some reason have a medical reason to not be vaccinated, obviously, we, we ask that anyone in their family and their household can be vaccinated, go ahead and do so. But then the other basic things that are part of that layer mitigation are the, the masking strategies. Obviously ventilation is very important with the Delta variant because it is much more aerosolized. It, it's more airborne transmitted. So ventilation and air exchange and, and filtration is much more important. The, the masking provides a barrier. Handwashing is good with any communicable disease. So those are all the things that we talk about as, as other mitigation strategies. You know, we know how this thing is spread. We know it's not spread outdoors very much at all. It really is not spread outdoors. We know it's spread indoors when there's close contact, crowded spaces, enclosed-in spaces that are not wide open. So, um, you know, everyone really needs to do their own decision-making, their own kind of risk assessment about their behaviors and, and where they're comfortable. And we're asking people to, to consider who else might be around as well and take care of each other to get through this. But hopefully, over the coming months, we will be in a much better position where we will be able to sort of transition out of this pandemic mode into the endemic mode where it's, this is another communicable disease, light flu, light hepatitis, light pneumonia, light pertussis, light tetanus, that we have a very effective and safe vaccine that is preventive. And obviously, we try to encourage that, but people have to do their own, their own risk assessments with it.
Dr. Dr. Bissel, on the, the upswing that, that we're looking at now, is there a primary age group? It, it seems like locally here, we're seeing, hearing more teenage and, and younger people getting it.
Yeah, so, you know, um, this is definitely spreading more amongst those who are not vaccinated. And so in the beginning, we made a huge push and we had really high vaccination rates amongst our older population. In a lot of our areas, our, our 60 and older populations, we have 85% vaccinated. But definitely when we start getting into our younger populations, and I'm saying more specifically, you know, our children who either can't be vaccinated or in the 12 to 18-year-olds, they're not vaccinated. And then probably in our 18 to 40, 45-year-old group, our vaccination rates drop down. And so Valid today, on their, um, on their update, they said that they're up to about 35 to 40% of their new cases are in younger populations and that's not unexpected. I can tell you that Corillian said the same thing in our update up here in the New River Valley, that they're seeing 20-year-olds, 30-year-olds, 40-year-olds being hospitalized, whereas before, they were seeing, you know, more of the 60-year-olds, 70-year-olds, 80-year-olds. And, and the hospitalizations, you know, obviously, it, it's, in most cases, it's people who have other underlying conditions. You know, people who are generally healthy are, are going to be less affected, but people who have other underlying conditions are definitely going to be more affected. So when you're talking young adults and middle-aged adults, unfortunately, one of the biggest, one of the biggest comorbidities that increases the risk with COVID is being overweight or obese. And a lot of our population, in our young and middle-aged population, is overweight or obese. And so they do end up, um, in, in the hospital. So yes, it is definitely a younger demographic.
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Bissel?
I, I just have one. I know you mentioned, Dr. Bissel, this is Jamie Smith. I know you mentioned earlier about the, what was put on the death certificate. You said if, if COVID was on there or a contributor, but you couldn't tell unless they've had to test, how can they put that on the death certificate if they haven't had to test to begin with?
So if they had an antigen test, that, that's probable. Again, the only test that's a confirmatory test is the PCR, unfortunately. So, um, if they had an antigen test, then that is a probable case. And again, you know, you look at the situation, um, if, if they were in a nursing home or if they were in a situation where we had a major outbreak, if they presented with all of the characteristics of COVID and then they had a positive antigen test, then, then that's enough to say that it's probable COVID contributing to the cause of death. So, so those would be the situations. That, that's the biggest thing, and I think it's confusing because it, um, an antigen test, to be quite honest, in somebody who is symptomatic, and obviously someone who's in the hospital is going to be symptomatic, an antigen test is, is very, very reliable, but we can't consider that a confirmed test. The only test is a, a PCR test is considered confirmed. And when you're in the hospital and you need those rapid results and you're trying to make clinical decisions, the PCR test, unfortunately, because testing is going up, the, the turnaround time on the PCR test is going up right now too. And so it can take a little bit longer to get that PCR test back. And I think most places now have access to, to the rapid antigen test. And so they're running a lot more of the antigen tests. But I, you know, we are not seeing, um, bad results with the antigen tests at all. The antigen tests are very reliable, especially in people who are symptomatic.
Okay, and I, and I know, and it's just a follow-up comment. This is probably more for the medical providers, but if the rapid test is something that we don't really put a lot of faith in, we, the PCR test is more like the Booker record for us, per what you said earlier. I can understand doing the PCR or the rapid test with somebody in the hospital, but also doing a PCR test as well. That way you would have that for certain, hey, I did do the PCR test, but I know that's more for the medical industry than it would be for you personally.
Yeah, I think, and again, I think in most cases in the hospital, they do send the PCR. But there are some situations where, you know, I think if they know the person's coming from a situation where it was an outbreak, they know there was COVID positive, their symptoms are characteristic and they have a positive antigen, they may not send the PCR. But I think most of the hospitals will, will get the PCR. But that is just, you know, just in talking about what a, a probable case is, we just have to make sure. That there is some, testing is just not the PCR test that, that is considered a probable case in most situations. I will tell you, in, in outpatient setting, um, again, if we know someone has been exposed, if they're a household contact or a post-contact of someone who is a known positive and they become symptomatic, in, in cases, even if they don't get tested, some of them don't want to get tested, we will still call them a probable case because they do have that known exposure and they have classic symptoms consistent with COVID. I don't personally take care of patients in the hospital. But I do think, uh, in most cases, you're right, that they do end up sending a PCR, but they will do a rapid test much more readily just to make clinical decisions for that.
All right, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for Dr. Bissel?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have about three questions. Hi, Dr. Bissel, it's Stacy Taylor. How are you tonight?
Hi, how are you?
Doing good, thank you, ma'am. Doing good, thank you, ma'am. So I've got a question. And one of my questions is obviously before your time because I know you're at the interim. But I think last year, we had our Assistant County Administrator sifting through data because we've got extremely inaccurate data on COVID numbers. And so kind of one of the things prompted I asked for this call was on a Facebook post that was put out by the Mount Rogers Health District dated August the 13th, which shows like a graph chart with numbers skyrocketing. But it's based on potential cases and not actual cases. And I think that's pretty confusing to our constituents and our public here when they see those figures. It's like it's designed to fear monger based on the way the data is put out there. So I would much rather see actual data instead of probable data out there. And here's why I say that. I had really good friends, I won't say their name. There's a group of five, took a trip together. Three of them were vaccinated, two of them were not. The three that were vaccinated wore a mask and wound up with COVID. The two that were not did not mask them and have the vaccine and they're non-COVID positive. But that probably tells me in the figures that those two people would be counted as a probable case. Is that right? That's my concern is I feel like the data is extremely inaccurate that's going out to the public. And I know a lot of this happened before your time, so I'm not attacking you. I just want some honest answers from my people.
Yeah, so I didn't see the Facebook post. How many cases were they putting out there? Were they putting out cases or were they putting out quarantine?
They actually, based on what it looks like, it looks like they put out cases, Dr. Bissel. And it's a, it's a graph chart going from like May the 10th through the 1st of August. And it has a dark blue color showing actual cases. And it has a light blue color showing potential probable cases, with the probable cases actually skyrocketing with a yellow curve line showing how bad we were trending up. But if you look at the actual true blue case numbers based on actual true data, it's not near as devastating with the increase in cases that this post portrays it to be.
What kind of numbers do that post have?
Trying to blow up the graph chart here, bear with me. It's showing like probable cases, like somewhere up in the 600 range, and actual cases somewhere maybe in the 200 range. Trying to look at the actual graph, the photo that was put out there. It's kind of hard to give you exacts, but that's kind of looks like the range that it's covering.
And that's over what period of time?
It showed going through August the 18th and starting back on about May the 10th, as best I can tell by the graph chart.
Because I will tell you, the numbers that I've seen for this past week, for the week, Mount Rogers was at about 600 cases for one week.
For one week?
And that's confirmed and probable cases. Again, those probable cases are antigen, antigen cases. I'll tell you in the New River Health District where I am right now, we are probably around 350 to 400 cases a week right now. So if those are not, given that we're having a surge, those are not unrealistic numbers to be expecting with something as transmissible as the Delta variant. I totally agree with you. I mean, I'm trying my best, and I have for this entire pandemic, to navigate this with reason and common sense. It is very serious for sure. And it is definitely more serious for people who are older and have medical problems and are higher risk. I agree with you. I don't like the panic and fear at all. But the numbers do bear out that we are seeing, you know, a significant rise in cases statewide right now. Like today statewide, they announced 3,000 cases. That's for one day. So over, you know, a seven-day period, we've been averaging over the past several days between 2,000 and 3,000 cases a day. So if you just say 2,500 cases a day, obviously, then we are in, you know, over 10,000, 15,000 cases in a week statewide. You know, to keep some perspective, the numbers are not as high as they were in the winter surge. But they are significant. I mean, I don't want to discount that the numbers of people are significant that are infected right now. And that's what you will see. You can pull up on the CDC website or the VDH website. With a highly transmissible variant, what you will see is almost a logarithmic rise in the number of cases. It's a very rapid, steep rise in the number of cases because it is so transmissible. But it, just mathematically, it can't continue that way. It is definitely, it definitely favors those who are more vulnerable, which is those who have not had COVID before or those who are not vaccinated. And then it's going to peak. And the epidemiology, the epidemic curves from other countries, from other states, show that that peak is going to be over four to six weeks. And then it will start to trail off. So I don't know what the numbers were on that Facebook post, but I, you probably, over the past couple of weeks, have seen between 400 and 600 cases a week.
Okay. And that's actual cases, not, that's not counting in like probable cases in those figures? Is that true, actual cases?
That's probably.
Okay, that's probably and actual.
That's probable and confirmed. Because again, I think what I see right now is that we are doing far more antigen testing than we are PCR testing.
Yes, ma'am.
So if differentiated confirmed lab positives versus probable, I would suspect that we're seeing more probable because again, the antigen tests are probable. The only confirmed would be the PCR. But the antigen tests are so much more readily available. Your pharmacies are doing them. A lot of primary care practices are doing them. Urgent care is doing them. People can purchase them over the counter in the pharmacy. And then they are supposed to self-report. How many people do, I can't tell you. But we do get people who self-report after they've tested at home. So those are all antigen tests. And they would be reported through the state data as probable.
Okay. My next question is related to hydrochloroquine. The, how long is medical providers going to be restricted on being able to write that to help with the significance of this virus? I know that may be more of a national question than it is a local health department question. But I know hydrochloroquine works pretty well from studies out there. And providers have been restricted on what they can write. Is that something that the health department can help change?
That would be through the state medical board. You know, that restriction came out through the FDA to all of the state licensure boards.
Yes, ma'am.
So if you wanted to be able to write that again, you know, I think it would have to be requesting that the restrictions be lifted through the State Board of Medicine. And that's not, I mean, I don't know the whole process for that. But that isn't, you know, something that came through the FDA to all of the state licensing boards recommending that, you know, there be restrictions on that and that there obviously be penalties for prescribing it off-label.
Perfect. And my last question, where does our Mount Rogers Health District stand as far as mandated vaccines, Dr. Bissel?
I don't think, the health department right now, you're talking for the community?
Yes, ma'am. Like where does the health department stand? Does the health department support mandated vaccines?
So VDH as a whole, where, you know, as a state agency, the governor obviously came out and mandated vaccines for state employees and state contractors. There are religious exemptions and medical exemptions. Those who are not vaccinated will end up having to test on a regular basis. And they're working through those details. As far as requiring the community to vaccinate, that would require to have any kind of a mandated vaccine. First of all, there really is no way to enforce a vaccine mandate other than through an employer putting that mandate out for employees or through schools. To make it one of the mandated vaccines for schools, that would require the General Assembly to mandate it through schools. You know, as far as a general public mandated vaccine, that really isn't going to happen. What I do see happening now that Pfizer has been given full approval and Moderna is expected, I do think more and more businesses will start to require employees to be vaccinated. I do think more and more businesses will require patrons to be vaccinated. So I do see that making it more inconvenient to not be vaccinated, just going about doing, you know, certain things. But as far as a mandate, there really is no enforcement of a mandate per se. And anything that would be mandated would be through schools. And that would have to be the General Assembly to put that out there.
Absolutely perfect, Dr. Bissel. Thank you for answering my questions, ma'am.
Does anybody else have any questions for Dr. Bissel?
I don't.
Well, thank you, ma'am. Before we let you go, one last question. How, what kind of timeline are we looking at before we get our own Health Department Director? And I brought this up with your predecessor that I didn't think it was fair with this hybrid funding system where you're funded by the state, but you're also funded by the localities, that we had to share her with county all the way to Kentucky. And she must have agreed with me because she found a new job. And now we have you, who's up in, from New River. And, you know, is there a timeline on that? I mean, I...
So, yeah, you know, I don't have a timeline. I can tell you it is a very high priority. I mean, I'll be very honest with you. There's been a lot of turnover in public health in general. Just like I said, there's been turnover with the hospital system. There's not a day that goes by that I don't think most of us get up and think this really didn't have to be this hard. It was kind of a perfect storm for this pandemic to have turned out the way it is. And there's a lot of frustrating things coming from higher levels that we have no control over. So absolutely, there's been a lot of attrition.
We completely understand that statement.
Yeah, absolutely.
It is a priority. They are actively recruiting. And VDH in the past, they did their own, they had their own recruiting group. But they have now hired basically a headhunter recruiting group because there are several director positions that are vacant right now. Because I am covering all of Southwest, getting Cumberland Plateau, Lenoir Wisco, and Mount Rogers covered is their top priority because most of the other ones are covering much smaller areas. I mean, just the sheer geography of what I'm covering in the population, it's over half a million people. I think it's close to 600,000 people. So it is their top priority. You know, I know that they, this company has already put out and has some candidates that they're screening resumes for. And, you know, we will do interviews as quickly as we can as we have viable candidates out there and get them in. We do have a promising, which I think will be some relief, is that there is somebody who I think is interested in Cumberland Plateau and Lenoir Wisco, who doesn't have a lot of experience, but would at least be able to come on board and we could mentor that person. And I think that would make a big difference too, just to have somebody else to help cover. So it is, it is a top priority. They are using an outside recruiting firm right now, not just relying on internal recruiting. And this area, Southwest, is number one on their list just because of the geography and the fact that it is three other health districts beside my own.
Well, thank you, Dr. Bissel. Thanks for zooming in.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I'm happy to join. And I will, as I said, I do think even just in the next month or so, we'll be in a different place. And I can come down and join in person as that level goes down a little bit.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you.
You too, ma'am.
Anything else under new business, Mr. Baer?
Other than the reports, no, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Move on to staff reports. Assistant County Administrator, Mr. Hankins.
Most of mine we'll talk about in closed session. But I did want to mention, you all may have seen, after our incident with the phone system going down for us and other 911 centers last month, we were able to use text to 911 for folks to request help. And they started coming in on that day. I tested the system with the director. And so the system does work. It is up. We've put out a press release that lets folks know that if you need assistance, and that's the only way that you can reach out, you can certainly text to 911 for assistance. So tell your constituents that it might be faster or safer for them in some instances, particularly if it's a, you know, someone who's in a domestic violence situation or may otherwise have difficulty talking to someone on the phone. Our last meeting, while we were meeting, we had meetings going on at Spedwell and Fort Chiswell for the comprehensive plan. Our consultant did those meetings. They had a few people that came out to both. They are continuing to work on the comprehensive plan. You'll see more about that in the coming weeks. They're reviewing some of our past plans and starting to formulate some of the language, taking data from the surveys that have been received so far. We are still short of the number of surveys that we'd like to receive. So if you can continue sharing on your social media, we're continuing to share on the county side as well, just so that we get enough input for that survey. And the rest of mine is closed session.
Mr. Baer?
Two items for action, Mr. Chairman. The first is a resolution for the VDOT Smart Scale Connector Road. I do have a set of plans, the full set of plans that VDOT dropped off on this. But as we had discussed and as presented at the Public Input Meeting, VDOT did shift the western portion of the road, I guess, to the north and the west a little bit due to a discovery of a cemetery that was in the original route of our Smart Scale application. So what you have before you is a resolution requested by VDOT in order for them to continue with their design for future construction of this road. And we request that you all approve this resolution.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2021-29.
So moved.
It's my area.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Have a motion by Ms. Lawson, a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Next item is an engagement letter with Hickok Brown and Firm. I had mentioned earlier about us using Hickok Brown and Firm, Mr. Juan Garcia helping us with audit preparation. One of our audit comments was the, over the last couple of years, is the transactions that the auditors have to conduct at the end of the year that they should not be able to conduct. So I would request the board approve us entering into this engagement with Hickok Brown and Firm for their services and preparing for our audit.
Entertain a motion to approve this presented.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion?
Is this like what we used to do?
This is, yes, there was a person there previously that used to help out with that. That is correct. I cannot remember. Earhart was her name. That is correct.
When you've been, when you've been on the board 30 years, you've got to be specified. Any other questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else, Mr. Baer?
No, sir. That is all.
County Attorney Report, Mr. Forden?
I don't have, I don't have any report.
All right, Board of Supervisors time. Mr. Terry?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to ask for a, I don't know if I'll take a vote to do it or not. I want a procedural change coming up for our next quarterly appropriations. There's a reason for it. I want the school board pulled to the side so I can vote on their funding separately. Reason being, back last year, this board passed a resolution that we would not support any kind of... that we would not support any kind of unconstitutional government mandates and direct any county funding toward those. The school board has instituted a mask mandate for the kids for a virus that masks doesn't work. It's unconstitutional. Should be a personal choice. If you want the vaccine, get it. If you don't, don't. Just like the mask. If you want the mask, wear the mask. If you don't, don't. And so that's just, I'm done. They, they didn't have the backbone to stand up and protect kids when it comes to the, to the new model policies. Several counties around us chose to do the right thing and protect the kids and use their policies that they already had in place. And I just, I'm done. Did some changes take place. There's a ton of lies that's taken place out of the school board up there. If anybody wants proof of that, I'll be glad to share a recording with you, get you in touch with the young lady that shared it. So I'm just asking because I don't want to vote down money for anybody else in the county. But I'm not interested in funding the school system to make it a little bit more on board and a little more forthcoming, a little more truthful. And that's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bear, correct me if I'm wrong. We can, as a, when we appropriate quarterly, a majority vote can pull out any line item, correct?
You can.
We don't have to change any procedure.
What I would do is bring you the list and what you can do if there's any of those line items that you wanted to pull out to vote on individually, you could, you could do that for any of the department line items.
Mr. Horn?
I do not have anything.
Mr. McCRoberts?
I don't have anything.
Ms. Lawson?
I don't have anything at this time.
Mr. Cook? That's been nice y'all. Mr. Smith?
I got three things. Be quick. Any updates on Jones Road?
For the six-year plan, it has been submitted to them. I have not gotten any updates from them yet, but we'll make sure to do so. And obviously, we can't add anything until we do the public hearing next May, April, May timeframe.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And getting a lot of positive feedback on the progress part of hunting, so everybody's very appreciative of us making that decision, and they're looking forward to getting drawn. And I'm looking forward to being drawn as well, by the way. And then the last thing I got, if you haven't noticed, I've got on black and gold tonight. The chairman should have had on orange and black.
That is orange. That is orange.
That's questionable.
You got the ideal for me.
Look, I did. He told me he was going to have his colors on, so I wore mine. If you didn't know, Fort Chiswell, Rory Treat play Friday night. Go Pioneers, and I'll pass it on to Mr. Chairman.
Well, you know, I didn't have much, but since you started. Mr. Smith, I, I'm man enough to admit when I'm wrong. So, and I'm really excited as you are that actual in-person high school football is back. So if, if Fort Chiswell should win Friday night, at our next meeting, I will rock the old gold and black. If you'll go on record of making the same deal where you can wear black.
Hey, I'm game, buddy.
And I don't think that requires any motion or any action.
I think you need to shake on it. I'll get out of your way.
And I did check. They do make orange, black, and your size. I got you. You know, years ago, Trent Crew was Mayor of Whitfield, and Dr. Humphrey was Mayor of Rory Treat. They used to, they had a pie, pie contest for several years. But then George Whitfield on that multi-year streak, and I think-
Of course they did.
We'll just wear the colors. All I have is, and I hate that Andy from VDOT's not here, had a couple of road problems. VDOT's been really good, you know, the past year with dirt roads and getting, you know, gravel and grading, machine work. If anybody out in the audience has any road concerns, you know, email whoever your supervisor is. Like I said, they've, in the past four years, they have really stepped up to the plate, you know, as far as addressing constituents' concerns. And we've got Kim Ayers here. Kim, I'm going to put you on the spot. Care Portal, August-
31st.
The 31st, they're having a thing at the Open Door Cafe to announce this new program. And it's a really neat program because it puts, you know, for years, we've had a lot of churches in Whitfield County and nonprofits that offer, you know, different services, whether it's, you know, if somebody breaks down on the interstate and they don't have any money, you know, there's a church that will put them up for a night, you know. Or if a house burns down and somebody needs emergency clothing or whatever, you know, you've got a church. Well, they've come out with this program called Care Portal, and it's putting everybody on the same page. So instead of making 5,000 phone calls, you can look at this website and everybody's on the same page. And I'm really excited for this. And it is, what time is it?
9:30 in the morning.
Kim Volin told me to welcome everybody, and they'll be explaining. So if you get a chance, come by Care Portal. They've got a website. It's a really neat program. And like I said, you know, for years, people with county nonprofits, churches, you know, they've been very generous with, you know, different donations and food banks and everything. Well, now we've got one spot, so if we know somebody that needs help or Kim knows somebody that needs help, or Sheriff Foster runs in and somebody needs help, you know, we've got, you know, we've got all this in one place, so I'm really excited about that, so.
What was the date again, Mr. Chairman?
August 31st.
They have integrated, they have a deal through various scripters.
And it's a- And if you've rode around Whitfield County in the last couple of weeks, you've noticed a lot of churches have the yard signs up that's got Care Portal, it's got the website. Like I said, it's probably something that should have been done a year ago, but it's pretty interesting, so.
We have many businesses that are-
Yeah.
So that's another piece of that, is that also there could be people that they can involve. But we have to be just, we need to, you know, the law, so the program itself.
And thank you for, and I totally forgot the businesses. I was focused on everything else together. There are a lot of businesses, and that's, that's why Kim's writing my speech for me.
Mr. Chairman, if there's anything that can be put out through our social media, if you'll get that to Mr. Hankins, if they're wanting people to come out next week, if it's, or also just any information in general about the program, if you'll get that to us, we'll put that out on our social sites.
Open Door Cafe?
Yes.
All right, next item on the agenda is closed session under section 2.2-3711A1, performance, performance, I can't speak, performance evaluation. 2.2-3711A5 Perspective Business or Industry Project Palm and 2.2-3711A6 and A29 Contract Negotiation Broadband Service. Entertain a motion to go in closed session. Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Have a second by Mr. McCRoberts. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now in closed session. Have a motion by Mr. Terry to come out of closed session. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Cook. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now back in open session. Mr. McCRoberts, if you'll read the certification?
This makes me happy. I can do a resolution. Certification of closed meeting, where as the Whitfield County Board of Supervisors convene the closed meeting on this date pursuant to an informed recorded vote. And according to the provision of Virginia Freedom of Information Act, where as section 2.22712 of the Code of Virginia requires certification of the Whitfield County Board of Supervisors, that such a meeting was conducted in accordance with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved, but the Whitfield County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters are awfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which is certification. Resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting or heard, discussed, or considered. I don't know who that is beating on that damn wall, but by the Whitfield County Board of Supervisors.
I think you've heard the certification. I entertain a motion to approve.
I do it.
Have a motion by Mr. McCRoberts. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Smith. Do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else coming forward, board? Hearing none, we'll be adjourned.